Good evening and welcome. I'm going to call the September 21st, 2022, meeting of the Orman Beach City Commission to Order. This is the second regular meeting for the month of September, held on a Wednesday due to budget season. State law doesn't allow taxing authorities to have their meetings on the same night because that wouldn't allow residents to appear and express their thoughts and concerns to them. It'd be hard for them to appear before two different taxing agencies. So the county went yesterday, they took precedence, and then we go tonight, we changed our meeting to a Wednesday when it would normally have been on a Tuesday. But either way, it's good to be here with you and always a pleasure to conduct the business of the city of Orman Beach. At this time, I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you, and I hope you felt welcomed by our finance director, Kelly McGuire, who's in the back there, and also our assistant finance director, Chris Beil. They served as our greeters this evening, and they produce, year after year, our award-winning budgets, and so we're very proud of the work that they do. Up in front of you, to my right, your left, is Taylor Lockhart, our reporting secretary. Next is our city clerk, Susan Daederer. Then we have Commissioner Dwight Selby from Zone One.
Good evening, folks.
Commissioner Troy Kent from Zone Two.
Evening, everybody.
To my left and your right, our deputy mayor and Zone Three Commissioner, Susan Persis.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome.
Our Zone Four Commissioner, Rob Littleton. City manager, Joyce Shanahan. Assistant city manager, Claire Whitley. City attorney, Randy Hayes. And way over there to my left is our police chief, Jesse Godfrey, and our fire chief, Howard Bailey. At this time, if you would please silence your cellphones and rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance. The invocation tonight is given by Pastor Scott Smith from First United Methodist Church.
Let us pray. God, we come to you, and we are grateful. We live in Orman Beach, and there are a lot of other cities in this state and nation we could live. We are blessed. Do not let us take for granted this city, for the beach sunrises and the Timoca River and everything in between. Remind us of the beauty of the city and the beauty of the people. As we gather to do the business of the city, everybody's got an opinion, and they think they're right. Help us to put aside our desire to be right, and let us be fair, and let us be just. In God's eyes, this is an election season. Help us to think through what we're doing and how it affects everybody. In your name, and pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot to lift up the first responders, and Jesse wanted me to do that, so.
Thank you. All right, we're starting tonight with some special recognitions. We have this very special guest who has been on the podcast for, starting with our representative, Tom Lee. I'm presenting our representative, Tom Lee, and we did have Tom in business now here in Orman Beach. I'm six years old, but I've been here since I was a kid. You're just as likely to find him in the halls of Tallahassee next year, or find him around the corner in Alabama, or.
At that address.
He is our hometown representative. Would love you to have him. One of the things that a lot of people are special about him, another of the things that are special about him is his commitment to this community. He, six years ago, agreed to run for office, and he said at the time he was going to stay as long as possible, almost eight years, as the term was, he was going to work as hard as possible to work towards a leadership position. So he best fit considering he had that, where he are until on the seventh and eighth year, and he is looking at a leadership position that , not just in Orman Beach, but all of the municipality and all of these areas.
Thank you. All right, so let me read, let me read a little bit about Tom. Whereas Representative Tom Lee, a graduate of the University of Central Florida and Stetson University College of Law, has been an advocate for his hometown and the citizens of Orman Beach since 2016. And whereas Representative Lee was elected to the Florida House for District 25, during his recent term, he served as the redistricting committee chair and on the appropriations committee. And whereas Governor Ron DeSantis has described Representative Lee as a fighter for Volusia County and Florida and protector of our freedoms, Representative Lee has written and supported legislation that serves all Florida residents. One with great significance is the Prescription Drug Importation Bill, which reduced prescription drug prices. And whereas locally, Representative Lee has used his leadership to secure funding of projects, including the widening of Williamson Boulevard, the Volusia Flagler Easter Seals Autism Center of Excellence, the Embry-Riddle Hybrid Propulsion Test Cell, and the Orman Beach Municipal Airport Access Road. And whereas most recently, Representative Lee championed the vital funding of two important Orman Beach projects, the Water Reclamation Facility Ultraviolet Disinfection Conversion and the Magnolia Oak Drive and Bonita Avenue Septic Tank Conversion. Representative Lee is taking measures to protect water resources that will impact the environment and our community for generations to come. Now therefore, I, Bill Partington, on behalf of the entire commission of the City of Orman Beach, Florida, do hereby proclaim September 21st, 2022, as a day to recognize Representative Tom Lee in the city of Orman Beach and encourage all residents to join with me in paying tribute to Representative Lee and thanking him for his hard work and support of Orman Beach's projects and for the valued service and advocacy he has provided to the citizens of Orman Beach, the county of Volusia, and the state of Florida. Thank you, Tom.
All right, Tom, I'm going to let you say a few words, and then we're going to bring up the other Tom, and also Representative Barnaby's representative as well. Thank you all very much. This is, this is truly humbling, and it is, it is so because this is, this is the shell of my home. This is where we grew up, this is where we chose to raise our family. We're one of the few folks who came back. We're one of the few folks who came back to raise a family, and it's really, really important to us that this is part of our community. So I'm incredibly humbled. I also want to say, in a complete lack of humility, that if you don't think I'm going to use this to torture my daughters, and you torture my brothers to make them celebrate Tom Lee Day every year, you're entirely crazy. So thank you very, very much. I appreciate it. All right, and Representative, don't go too far. If you haven't figured out yet, it's Legislative Appreciation Night, and we're lucky to have some wonderful legislators with us. You can't imagine the amount of issues that these gentlemen deal with and their staffs. It's, you know, at the city level, we think we deal with a lot. If you go to Legislative Day in Volusia County and just sit there from eight in the morning till five in the afternoon and watch the hundreds of people from Volusia County who come before them, each with a different, complex issue, it's mind-boggling, the amount of time and effort that they put in, and that's just a snapshot of it. That doesn't count all the hours, countless hours that they put in. That's time away from their families, so their whole family's sacrifice, but they do it because they care about their community, they care about their city, and they have a heart for public service. And so it's an honor for us to recognize them for that. And Tom, we have a plaque for you. It reads, "On behalf of the City of Orman Beach residents and visitors, it is with great honor to express our appreciation and gratitude for your representation, support, and advocacy of our beautiful city." And I'll ask, that's for you, sir, if you have enough hands, and then we'll ask Senator Tom Wright to come up, who is also part of our Volusia Legislative delegation, and now, I understand with the redistricting, represents Orman Beach as well, which is wonderful. Tom was always ours anyway, whether he realized it or not, and now he's officially ours. So thank you so much. And I'm going to give you the mic, let you say a few words, and then give you your plaque.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's really been an honor to serve. Our, our good friend Travis Hudson has told me since I've been a senator, he's to the north, is just take care of our Volusia friends, as I'm right here, so why not do that? And I'm happy to do it. And when asked after the redistricting maps came out, they said, "So how do you feel, Senator Wright?" And I jumped up and said, "I'm the happiest senator here, because I moved from Port Orange all the way up to almost the Flagler Line." So I'm really excited about that. Forty is kind of the dividing line, south of forty, my district, north of forty, there's still in travesties, but I'll still help them. Because you know what, just like Tom Lee and myself, we're here to take care of Floridians. We're not like, oh, you're on the other side of the fence, you can't, you can't come in. No, we take care of Floridians, don't we? And that's what we do. So I'm really proud to be able to say, no, part of Orman Beach at least is in my district, and I'm here for all people in Florida, and I'm really proud to do it. And let me just say that, you touched on it, it is a calling, and it is our way to serve our community. I think probably back in the beginning of our country, we probably had those leaders out there that said, "Okay, you do it for two years, you do it for two years, we'll all pitch in." And so I'm up for reelection. He's already in, and he's my new best friend now because he's the appropriations chair, so just don't walk the way. Buddy. Glad to be here. Always proud to work with you. Thank you. Thank you, sweetie.
And then next, representing Representative Webster Barnaby, who had another meeting, couldn't be with us, is his district aide, Hilda Quintera. Hilda, if you'd come up. We know, it's like our Toms, we know how hard Webster works as part of the Volusia delegation. He is an impressive man, he's got an incredible presence. We're sorry we missed him tonight, but we still do want to honor him and thank him for all the work he does for Volusia County. So thank you for being on our behalf. I know he works hard. And now, if we can get one more picture permission, and Jen, you just tell us where you need us. We will move to the adoption of the fiscal year 2022-2023 millage rates and budget, and I'll ask our clerk to read 5A by title only.
Resolution number 2022-110, a resolution adopting final millage rates to be levied for fiscal year 2022-2023, directing certification, expressing legislative intent, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2022-110, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. Per Florida statute, I'm required to state that the final millage rate for the city of Orman Beach necessary to fund the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget is 3.7610 mils. This rate is 5.68% above the rollback rate of 3.5587 mils. The debt service millage rates are 0.0050 for the 2003 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund and 0.0800 for the 2010 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund. This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak or ask questions prior to adoption of the final millage rate and budget? Seeing none, I just need a motion and second to adopt the final operating millage rates.
I move approval of resolution number 2022-110.
Second.
Moved and seconded. The final operating millage of 3.7610 mils is 5.68% above the rollback millage rate. The resolution also includes adoption of the debt service millage rates of 0.0050 for the 2003 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund and 0.0800 for the 2010 General Obligation Bond Sinking Fund. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
No.
Mayor Partington.
Yes.
The operating millage rate is set at 3.7610 mils, which is 5.68% above the rollback millage rate of 3.5587 mils. We move to 5B.
Ordinance number 2022-26, an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the 2022-2023 fiscal year, beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, repealing all inconsistent ordinances and parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-26, read by title only.
Thank you. I just need a motion and second.
I move ordinance 2022-26.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote to adopt the budget of $112,493,789.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
No.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. Do I hear any objection to closing the public hearing? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed, and we will go to audience remarks, starting with Mary Jo Allen.
Good evening. I'm Mary Jo Allen, and I'm the chair, or incoming chair, for the 2023 Board for the Orman Beach Chamber. I've been a resident in Orman Beach for over 36 years, and on behalf of our chairman, Don Grendel, and the board of directors and the staff, we want to thank you for your continued support of the Orman Beach Chamber. 2022 is proving to be a successful year for our businesses in the chamber despite the ongoing challenges and still the effect of COVID. We continue to be a resource for our business to help them prosper. The chamber has just completed an interior facelift by replacing all the flooring, and the chamber is investing in a new conference room furniture that better fits the needs of our business community. I encourage you all to stop by and check it out. The board completed a new strategic plan at the end of last year with our priorities focused on workforce, education, and advocacy development. As part of the plan, we launched our youth leadership program with 18 high school students from Seabreeze and Father Lopez. The program aims to educate students about our community and the different career opportunities that are right here for developing future leaders. We will continue to focus on programs such as Economic Prosperity Hour, Startup Grind, and our leadership programs going on Class 19 in March of 2023. Our Rob Ritter Scholarship Program is reaching more high school seniors, and we gave away seven $1,000 scholarships last year. We appreciate the partnership of the city. Our visitor count is back to pre-pandemic numbers, and we will more than likely exceed the 2019 numbers by the end of this year. So I want to thank you for your continued support and allowing me to speak today. Thanks.
Next is Alan Burton.
Alan Burton, 915 Ocean Shore Boulevard. Grow the Loop. Problem statement I would share with you tonight is, how can the Orman Beach City Commission, you, Mr. Mayor, and the City Commission, lead and facilitate an intergovernmental and private sector cooperative initiative to plan, plant, nurture, and sustain the Orman Loop as a crown jewel? Grow the Loop. Call to action. Authorize and direct the city manager to plan, plant, nurture. Plan is have the advisory boards and your citizens take a look at the loop and evaluate it and report back to you what they see as a, as a group, because you have a great governance process here in the city of Orman Beach. Survey all the parcels on the loop in the city of Orman Beach, private and public, and ensure that the loop, to grow the loop, you take a look at, after the literature review, looking at the comp plan, the land development code, the budget, that I'm suggesting that that idea be incorporated a little more succinctly in those planning budgets. And I also suggest that we plant more trees or canopies where it's appropriate along the loop, and plant other natural plants to help maintain our unique character and charm. Nurture the loop. Prune and shape trees to maximize health and canopy. Provide technical assistance to the property owners along the loop, similar to Soil and Water Conservation District, where the district conservationist works hand-in-hand with individual farmers and ranchers that come up with wildlife and conservation plans. Sustain the, the loop and the downtown overlay, similar to the overlays you have at the airport, but have a loop overlay. Integrate the budget and departmental goals and objectives and performance outcomes to all employees for growing the loop. And grow the loop to cultivate the highest quality of life for us. And what I would just point to you is that in your mission statement, nowhere does it say anything about future generations. So I would ask you to put that as a major element in the review of growing the loop. I am, I was asked to, to stay active in the community, so I told Sue Parkinson, yeah, okay. So this is kind of like, kind of like that, I appreciate that, and I honor her and her family, and that, I appreciate the chance to speak tonight in front of all you, and that, if you'd excuse me, I gotta go back to work. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes from the City Commission meeting of September 7th, 2022. The minutes have been sent to the commission for review, also posted to the city's websites. Any additions, deletions, or corrections, commission? Just need a motion to approve.
Move for approval of the minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, and we'll show those approved unanimously. Does anyone wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? If not. Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And does any commissioner wish to comment on any of the consent agenda items? Commissioner Selby?
Yeah, Mary, thank you. I'd like to comment on item F, Riverside Drive closure, closures. If memory serves me, there's nearly 35 dates that Riverside Drive will be closed in the coming fiscal year. And it, what occurred to me was, and I'm just throwing this out there as a suggestion, I have no idea where the community stands on this, and I even don't have a personal position on it, but should Riverside Drive be closed permanently between Granada and, well, the one block, one block's off of Granada. I mean, it would, you know, I can see some benefits, but I can also see some detriments to it. But if we're closing it for over 30 days, that's two, one, two, or three weekends, pretty much every single month, it's a really dangerous place to have, you're coming down the bridge and right at the bottom of the bridge, you have to make a right turn onto, onto Riverside Drive. So again, I don't know where the residents of Riverside Drive stand on that. I don't, I don't recall it ever being discussed in the six years that I've been on the City Commission. But I thought I'd throw it out there and see whether or not anybody else thought it was worth talking about.
Thank you. Commissioner, anyone else? Nope. All right, we will move to public hearings. I'll open the public hearings and ask the clerk to read 9A.
Ordinance number 2022-28, an ordinance annexing one parcel of real property into the city of Orman Beach, said property located at 1405 North US Highway 1, Volusia County Parcel Number 3136-01-45-0010, setting forth zoning privileges and obligations regarding the property, redefining the territorial boundaries of the city of Orman Beach to include the property, redesignating the boundaries of Zone 1 of the city of Orman Beach to include the property, providing for transmission, providing for severability, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2022-28, read by title only.
And I'll ask Planning Director Stevens Breaker to speak on the side.
Good evening, Stevens Breaker, Plan Director. This is a request for an annexation. The property is located at US 1 and Pine Tree Drive. So US 1 would be located here, Pine Tree Drive is located here. Property is approximately 5.26 acres. It's located within our, in our local service boundary area. So basically, back in 2014, there was agreement that the city standards would control in this area based on a connection to utilities. They are now annexing. It has an existing city low-intensity commercial land use and a county zoning that was incorporated into the plan business development. Future amendments will come back to the commission for site development. Staff is recommending approval of annexation and available for any requests, any questions.
Thank you, Stevens. Any questions for Stevens? I have one card. Basically, it's the applicant. If needed, does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Then just need a motion and a second.
Mayor, I'd like to move approval of ordinance 2022-28.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. I'll let Susan score that one. And any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis. Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes, nine B.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-nine. An ordinance amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan of the City of Orman Beach by amending the future land use map to change the designation of three parcels of real property totaling thirty-three-point-three-one plus or minus acres, generally located at Old Dixie Highway and Plantation Oaks Boulevard. Volusia County property appraiser parcel numbers three-one-two-four dash zero-zero dash zero-zero dash zero-zero-two-two, three-two-three-nine dash zero-three dash one-seven dash zero-one-three-zero, and three-two-three-nine dash zero-three dash zero-seven dash zero-one-zero-zero, from Orman Beach Low Density Residential and Volusia County Urban Low Intensity to Orman Beach Recreation Open Space. Providing for conflict, authorizing transmittal, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-nine, read by title only.
Thank you. And I'll ask Planning Director Stevens Breaker to speak on this item again as well.
This is a comprehensive plan, small-scale land use map amendment. The property is located along Old Dixie Highway and Plantation Oaks Boulevard with the FPNA power easement located here. Volusia County purchased the property from Plantation Oaks, and earlier this year, that was separated from the Plantation Oaks plan development. So that required a designation of land use and zoning. So the application is to go from Orman Beach Low Density Residential, which was Plantation Oaks, and Urban Low Density to Recreation Open Space. The intended use of the property is the preservation of land and a recreational trail. Staff is recommending approval, and the Plenary Board also recommends approval. The next step would be a second reading on October fifth, and then transmittal to Volusia County Earth Management Commission.
Thank you, Steven. Any questions for Steven?
I move approval of ordinance number twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-nine.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Nine C.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash one sixteen. A resolution authorizing the execution issuance of a third amended special exception development order associated with Riverbend Academy located at two-zero-eight-zero West Granada Boulevard in the SR Suburban Residential Zoning District, authorizing an increase in the allowed number of students, removing limited hours of operation for the school, and authorizing the expansion of the building by approximately thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty-seven plus or minus square feet under certain conditions. Establishing conditions and expiration date of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash one sixteen, read by title only.
Thank you. And Steven, if you would, give us some background on this one as well.
This is a request for a special exception at the Riverbend Academy. West Granada Boulevard is at the top of the screen. This is the existing Riverbend Church and Academy. Old Temoca bounds the property in South, South Timber Creek. A portion of the property is in Daytona Beach, and then the other portion is in Orman Beach. The church was approved in two thousand to conduct a private school. Over the years, the private school has grown, and they're basically seeking the ability to continue to grow the school. There are two areas where the building would be expanded. Phase one is located just south of the school, and then to the west would be phase two. So they are seeking to increase the number of students and to eliminate the hours of operation restrictions in your packet with the building plans and the site plans. Staff is recommending approval, and the Plenary Board also recommends approval. By a five to zero vote.
Thank you. Any questions for Steven?
Yeah.
Commissioner Selby?
Steven, I mean, this seems, obviously, this, I'm supportive of this, like the staff and Planning Board. Why are we, why do we even have to go through this?
So in their zoning district, the, the school is a special exception use. So that's one trigger. The other trigger is, back in two thousand, that was the way the, the school was approved. So they would have to amend that development order to, to increase the number of students. The number of students is likely artificially high, so that way they don't have to come back in the future to, to do it.
And there's no, there isn't, in our code, there isn't any exemption for a huge site like this. I mean, you know, they're on a very large site, so the impact on the neighbors is-
Right. So when the zoning district was created, the, the thought process was, this type of use requires a special exception. And it's positive that, that no one is objecting, but it's a process that needs to go because everyone might not be listening.
Right. Very good. Thank you.
I have one card from the applicant's representative. Anybody have questions from Mr. Downs? Perfect. Thank you, Mark.
I'll move approval of twenty-twenty-two dash one sixteen.
I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we will close the public hearings and move to ten A.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-seven. An ordinance of the City of Orman Beach, Florida, amending Article Three Firefighters Pension Trust Fund of Chapter Sixteen Pensions and Retirement of the Code of Ordinances, amending Section Sixteen dash forty-three Establishment and Operation of Fund, Finances and Fund Management, Providing for Severability of Provisions, Providing for Codification, Repealing All Ordinances in Conflict Herewith, and Providing an Effective Date. This is the second reading of ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-seven, read by title only.
I don't have any cards. I move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. Eleven A.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash one seventeen. A resolution finding a public purpose for the city to participate in a joint participation agreement between St. John's River Water Management District, Volusia County, and the City of Orman Beach for the acquisition of certain real property located at nine-zero-one Airport Road in Orman Beach, Florida, consisting of approximately eighteen-point-six acres. Approving and authorizing the execution of a joint participation agreement for Orman Beach's portion of the purchase of the property, approving and authorizing the execution of an option agreement for sale and purchase of the property, approving and authorizing the execution of a perpetual conservation easement in favor of St. John's River Water Management District, authorizing the execution of all documents incidental thereto, and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash one seventeen, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. And Steven, did you want to give us a very brief, I think everybody's familiar with this, but a very brief rundown?
So the subject property is at nine-zero-one Airport Road. Airport Road is located here on the map in the railroad track with the Temoca River. The city has been working with St. John's River Water Management District and Volusia County. We both have representatives, representatives here tonight. If there are any questions, to form a joint participation agreement. When this property was first looked at, the issue was there was not enough funding dollars. Through participation with St. John's and Volusia County, the distribution has been set up for sixty percent from St. John's and twenty percent from Volusia County and Orman Beach. The city's total would be a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars with a maximum closing cost of seven thousand, so a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars as, as a maximum price. Both the city of Orman Beach and Volusia County would own the property. St. John's would hold the conservation easement over the property. That would limit it to recreation, resource-based recreation facilities of uses such as biking, hiking, bird watching, and the city will need to develop a management plan if approved. There is sufficient funds in the budget for this if the Commission elects to approve it. It is consistent with our Parker and Rickmaster Plan, and tonight we are undergoing the City of Orman, Orman Beach's action. On September sixth, Volusia County approved their joint participation agreement. And again, if approved, St. John's would look to, to their action on October eleventh. Again, staff is available, and then representatives from the other jurisdictions are here, and we'd like to thank them for helping us form this partnership.
Absolutely. Thank you, Steven. And I know Volusia County's approval was unanimous, the council.
Yes, sir.
And thank you and the City Manager for being there to offer support and/or answer questions, anything that they needed or wanted. But I don't have any cards. I just need a motion and a second.
I move approval of resolution number twenty-twenty-two dash one-one-seven.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mayor, I just have a question for Mr. Breaker. Mr. Breaker, in, in, I don't know if it was in the, our earlier discussion when we were buying this property or agreeing to buy it, or in the current write-up, but the, there was a reference to the DOT and, and their needing of some mitigation area or something like that. Is, is that part of this deal or not? Or how does that fit into this whole transaction?
That's the genesis of the St. John's contribution. So basically, in essence, that is mitigation from the DOT project. That's how, that, that's how the project came about is basically, FDOT needed that mitigation, St. John's needed the conservation easement, the county and the city worked together. So basically, it's, there's four parts of it, but the DOT is the money to St. John's.
So DOT, and what they needed was just preservation of land? They don't need water retention or-
Right. It's, it's basically preservation. They, they would have been okay with a conservation easement only, which is why the county and city are now owning the property, and St. John's is, is maintaining the conservation.
So, I mean, maybe this isn't the right time to talk about it, but what, what, why do they need a conservation easement? Why does FDOT, what triggers the need for FDOT to have a conservation easement?
It's very similar to wetland mitigation, right? So if you impact the, the environmental characteristics of a property, you have to mitigate it somewhere else. So this is their, their mitigation of their environmental impact for the roadway project.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Commissioner. Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Selby?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Yes.
Commissioner Persis?
Yes.
Mayor Partington?
Yes. And we move to reports, suggestions, and requests, starting with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Commission. We appreciate the hard work you did on the budget this year. It's always an interesting process, but you give it a thorough review, and we appreciate that. And I'd also like to thank the Finance Department, both Kelly Maguire and Chris Viall do an amazing job with that regard. Just a couple of things. We're continuing to finish our facility hardening. There, as you remember, we got that mitigation grant, FEMA mitigation grant to put in resistant windows, and we've done that at, we started at the Police Department, we finished here at City Hall, and now we're over at Public Works. So we're, should be finishing that up in the next couple of weeks. This budget next year includes a couple of different sidewalk projects. And one of them is through the Community Development Block Grant Program. And as you know, community development dollars have to be used in a specific area. And what we're going to be doing is sidewalks on South Washington Street. And we've held a pre-construction meeting, and a notice was issued to proceed, so we should see that moving ahead. Likewise, we had community development block grant funds for the playground at Fleming. A majority of that work has been installed, and we're just waiting for the final play surface to be installed, and that should happen in the near future. Water reclamation facility, our clarifiers, we had a, you know, we're going to be improving those clarifiers. We had a pre-construction meeting on Thursday, and the contractor is finalizing their project schedule, and hopefully will, should begin while they start their ordering in the near future. A couple of notes about upcoming events. National Night Out, that's a big one for us. We all enjoy that. That will be held on Tuesday, October fourth, so your Commission meeting will move to Wednesday, October fifth. The Police Department Command staff grills hot dogs and hamburgers for people, and we have lots of things for the young folks to do, so we encourage everybody to come out for that. Movies on the Halifax, October seventh. That's the movie night that we partner with Realty Pros, and they do trunk or treat at that meeting. The film is Scoob. I didn't quite know what that was, but that's the old version of Scooby Doo. So that will be October seventh at seven PM. October eighth, we have our reel in the fishing, reel in the fun fishing tournament, and that will be at Bailey River Bridge Gardens. They'll be fishing in the Halifax. And State of the City, October eleventh at eleven-thirty AM. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have anything for me tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Little-
I have one, Joyce, the EOC, did that facility get hardened with the hurricane?
I think that was already-
It was armed?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. All right.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Any other questions for the City Manager? Thank you. Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley. Thank you, Claire. City Attorney Randy Hayes.
No comments. Good night, man.
Thank you, Randy. And tonight, we start with Commissioner Selby.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. Today, earlier today, I was in downtown Daytona Beach, took a right on International Speedway Boulevard, came over their bridge, and as I was driving over their bridge, and Mayor, you've commented on this more than once, how much more attractive their bridge is than our bridge. That decorative railing that they have on both sides of the bridge, they have these ornamental tile mosaics periodically, and even their concrete buffer, the median and the side rails that separates the driving lanes from the, from the pedestrian areas are painted. And, and our bridge lacks all of those things. And I just really think that I would, I would really encourage us to reach out to FDOT or whomever, especially with this, you know, with this Granada Boulevard plan that we have going on, where essentially the bridge is excluded from it. It's not, it's not part of the plan upgrading that they're doing. There's also a, I, I heard about this at the Main Street Board Meeting, that staff is working on a plan to light the palm trees in the downtown area between Beach Street and US One, which was, you know, was well-received, but it's going to be, it's going to be heard by the committees and then go to the board formally. So there's a lot of things happening in the downtown to beautify it, and I, I would really like to see us push the, put the, push, push, push FDOT and/or the county or ourselves to, to do more to upgrade that, and including uplighting of the bridge, LED uplighting, so that the lights could be changeable based on the season or the event or whatever is happening. So I'm not sure exactly how to get this moving, but we've talked about it so many times, and it seems like now might be the right time to do that. The other thing, the second thing, so maybe at the end of my comments, we can revisit these, but the second thing was that as you approach A-one-A on International Speedway Boulevard, the vista straight ahead is the beach approach. And their beach approach, I'm sure many of you are aware of this, you may not have a mental picture of it, but there's a really nice entry feature. And it, it has two very decorative columns with a big arch over the, that you drive under to go onto the beach. And it says Daytona Beach, World's Most Famous Beach. And so as I was looking at that, I thought, wow, wouldn't that be great to have something similar to that at Granada Boulevard? So when you drive through our beautiful downtown and you get to the beach, some kind of an entry feature that, that welcomes you to the birthplace of speed, Orman Beach, the birthplace of speed, or, or maybe some other moniker. And again, I, I, I think these are ideas that, that could dramatically enhance the experience that our visitors and our residents have when they drive through our main east-west drag and then enter onto our, one of our primary recreation areas. I have one, one regret that I need to share, and that is that I will not be able to attend the State of the City. I'm, I'm really torn. I, I've been asked to travel to Cuba. That, during that time period, I'm on the board of a ministry, and we are sponsoring a pastors' conference in Cuba for fifty or so pastors from all over the island. And, and I've been asked to be there, the ministry, the US ministry that's sponsoring that, I, as a board member, have been asked to be there. And so I have, I have chosen to go there instead of be at the State of the, and it will prevent me from being at the State of the City. And I'm, I feel terrible about that because I love the State of the City. I think it's a- I think it's a great event. It actually was started by the Chamber when I was the Vice President of Economic Prosperity at the Orman Beach Chamber of Commerce. So it's near and dear to my heart. And finally, the last comment I want to make is, over the weekend, I took two of my grandchildren, my wife and I did, out to the Farito Family Park at the Orman Airport Rec Field. And, you know, we all know about that because we were all there when it was dedicated, but it is a fabulous park. And so if you have kids and, you know, you need to wear them down a little bit, they need a little bit of exercise, recreation, whatever, that is a great park. Fantastic parking, it's got a shade structure, it has great recreation elements for the kids. It is, it is just spectacular, and it's handicap-equipped, you know, it has capacity for wheelchair-bound children and so forth. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to, you know, pat ourselves on the back. It's well-designed, it's just really a great park, and it might not be top of mind for a lot of people, you know, but it's a great place to take your kids. So with that, I'll say good night, unless there's some discussion on my other two suggestions about the bridge enhancements or the welcome sign at the beach.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody want to discuss those now, or you can discuss them in your comments closing, or obviously, anytime in the future, you can bring those up. Commissioner Kent.
Yeah, I'll just talk about Crime Stoppers. We had a, it was great to get back in person to the Crime Stoppers event. It was held this year at the Daytona Speedway, the Daytona 500 Room, and I just wanted to compliment our Police Department and Detective Ryan Smith, who was our candidate. I'm super proud of him and all of the law enforcement that were involved that night. Captain Roos was there, you know, helping to represent the City of Orman Beach, and he did a fine job, so thank you for that as well. With that, I'll say have a nice evening.
Thank you. Commissioner, Deputy Mayor Persis.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I'd like to start off first with, I love how we acknowledged our Representatives Barnaby and Leek. That was just really amazing. They have done great things for our city, and we, I'm just so happy that we acknowledge them and thank them, and also Senator Wright. I know they really care about our city. I did want to mention about the fabulous Memorial Bridge Walk on September 11th. We had a wonderful crowd out here at City Hall, and it was very meaningful to, you know, all of us. We all know what, where we were and how we felt that day, that morning around 9 o'clock when we saw those planes hit the Twin Towers. So I'm just so glad our city, you know, recognizes this day and acknowledges what our country went through. I was lucky enough with the mayor to attend the 10-year celebration of the Observer, which was great. I know we all appreciate Darlene back here and all the great news that we see in the Observer every week. It's kind of how you find out about really what's going on. You got to make sure you read it because they are really great at putting everything out there. So it was really a nice reception at our museum, so it was just great. I was just very proud of our little newspaper here. And I wanted to also tell Commissioner Selby, I agree with you about the bridge. That's something I've mentioned too. I think our bridge could be so spectacular. I'm not sure about the beach on Granada, that, because I'd want to get the bridge done first. I think I really, if I had to pick one, I'd want the bridge because it is so pretty, and so many people walk on that bridge. It's just, it is just amazing, the use that it gets, and I think making it just a centerpiece of our town is just the right thing to do. So I do agree with that. And I want to thank everyone for being here, and have a wonderful, safe evening.
Thank you. And Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. Sure, it's kind of befuddling how FDOT is totally passing over the Granada Bridge. I mean, that's the essence of that corridor, and beautifying it would be definitely in the best interest of the City of Orman Beach. I'll just want to encourage our residents to remember that the tropics are heating up now, and that you should have your plan in place, all the supplies needed, you know. We kind of got lucky with Fiona not coming here. Other people got unlucky, unfortunately, with that, but there's another one brewing, and I encourage every resident to take necessary precautions to get themselves ready in case of an emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I just want to thank FDOT, although I don't think they're here tonight, but I know representatives from the St. John's River Water Management District and also from the county are here. Thank them for a partnership that will benefit all our residents for, well, forever, really, in a way that preserves 19 acres of pristine property along the beautiful Timoca River. Pastor Scott spoke about that during his prayer earlier, and so being able to do that, and that 19 acres isn't just sitting there by itself, it sits next to a park that's already there, and then on the south side of that park, there's 100 and some acres that could be an additional park. So it really has the potential to be an amazing asset for the City of Orman Beach, and it's exactly what our residents are asking for. So it was the right project at the right time, and we were just lucky that we had partners that were willing to work with us, so thank you for that. The bridge lighting with the LED, we've talked about that for years. I think there's some opportunities for that coming up in the future. Commissioner Selby, you bring it up at a good time. And then, of course, I've talked about the ISB Bridge before and how beautiful that is, and trying to get our bridge closer to that model. I think our Chamber could help with that. I think our Main Street could help with that, and then our residents who use this four-corner area as a huge cultural, community, and exercise area. It really is kind of the heart of our downtown. It pulls the two sides of the, of Orman Beach together, both the mainland and the beach side, and it's kind of the glue that holds us together. It is heavily used, it's a beautiful place, not just to fish, but to watch the sunrise or the sunset, and you see quite a bit of activity there. And so anything we can do, I think, to beautify that. It creates a sense of place, creates more of the unique charm that we consider Orman Beach, and so hopefully, those ideas continue to have legs and maybe, maybe happen soon with everything else that's going on. It'd be an opportunity for some great synergy there. Joyce, you've covered all the announcements as far as the wonderful activities that are happening in October coming up, and looking forward to those. And with that, at 7:56, we will be adjourned and say good night.